Ole vusui ngopul kalame, omato fata si itato poot fasa lau nee ma'afatu ya senia sinapatis filo. Ya ole faltua fa'fe'anga ngaloo nga luue nei wainui. Ya a'misipitato ma'lo fa'anga ngia Kathleen Filo. O i'olo o'tamo'oe tava ele fa'anga palota muli puli nuu o'toonei porua. Ya opul kalame, fo'i fa'yanga nei luue. Tamfaya'ua we fa'a'aniua tulfa'asamoonis o'tanauanga Kathleen. Ya ma'nei fo'i se'i fa'filoa itato ma'lo i'ana fa'a'anga solu lele itato interview. Momoa fatalo fato lo'fionga faltua senia ni ta'ao.
Fatalo fato lauwa fionga afmasanga. Ya a'misipfo'i le puli nga maluale si fongala muu ai porua nee. Ya ma'lo la'va so'i fu'a.
Ma'lo, wale va so'i li filoa.
Ya a'sa'ulai lauwa fionga. Wale va tausanga le to'asato tu'e fe'liua ilia i'ava taya'ava noa wa tu'eina mayele tu'ua ya laile. Ille fatanoa ina Kathleen. Ya oma'ua fo'i male'ava noa tu'e ma'ua estato ma'afanga. Fa'atai la'va.
Ole vaya otaimi le itato filo isai tai Wellington ya ale u'tato tautunei porua.
Sa'ula.
Kathleen Kiora, welcome to Samo capital radio. This is CNN of the Pacific.
Ma'lo le so'fu'a maua ma'lela ngimana?
Ma'lo, ma'lo level 5, that's good. So, how you been feeling leading up to this time of election campaign?
Well, first of all, I would just wanna say thank you for allowing us to be in this space. And acknowledge my mother, my mother-in-law senior for her support. And I actually found I've gotten a lot of support and that's felt really reassuring. And especially towards the end of this campaign, because campaigning is really hard. It's very challenging and a lot of energy. But it is worth it. So, I'm feeling supported, tired, but hopeful.
Well, it's a test of the stamina of one.
It is.
To try and persevere. You work 24 hours, sleep five hours, 24 hours.
Constantly on the mind.
Alright, ole itato ma'lo fa'anga ngia pe'ona muu ma'ia olfaltua ya senia. O i'ole faltua olfai'au ya sinapati ya filo. Ya oliva fo'ina itato nga luue yasutu na ita'ia otai i Wellingtoni. Ya alaimi nee ole vatas i'ou te'i fo'i le interview nei o Kathleen. O'olo o'tamo'oe tava ele le afo'i fa'yule tu'anga tu'e fa'yule iporua nee. Ya ma'ua'ua i'atu sa'ule ng'o'o filo va pe'ale pe'ase pitanga ya ale u'te'u itato filoa itaro. Ya na'utusi si'ala ngai omato fata si atu'ulpofasa lau si fongala muu. Ole fa'fa'lo'a i'atu ele fa'faltua ya Kathleen Filo. Ya ilaimi ma'lo lo'ita'to pukalame onu i'ele vusui ya inga itato nu'fo'oto'uni. O la'afasi tu'anga luue olfaltua. Asia'atu le sato potu i'aa so'ma'le le to'luu o Kathleen. Ya se'i si'ala mai'fo'ltato o'fa'fo'anga a'misila voto mai'mo mai'lo ng'olato. Ma'nei fo'i o'tato olitiho'oli tiopacifica i'pule atato visi su'inga o'tu'anga fa'pea. Ina i'ama'ua fo'i fe'utanga i'ata'to va'ua i'fo'itanga itanauatu. So just introduce the how we're gonna run this thing. You know, we'll be having a change and your better half will come and sit next to you. That's your best half. Kathleen, perhaps talk a little bit about yourself, introduce yourself to the listeners.
Alright, thank you. So, yes Kathleen Filo is my name. I am, I'm not Samoan. But I am, my husband and my children are. And obviously my mother-in-law is too. I am from Puridua, I was born here. My father, he's from Ireland, so I always like to acknowledge my father's side. I think it's really important that you know where you come from and all the sides. So, when I was young, actually when I was seven, we moved to Ireland. And we lived there for about seven years. So I got to see my father's side and the country there and get to know my family over there. On my mother's side, I am here Uriaho'unga Tuaranga Tira. I am Uri ancestor of Tuaranga Tira, so Ngati Toa is my iwi. Which is, as you know, the mana finua of Puridua. So, our family has been here for about eight generations. In Puridua, so very proud of my heritage. And also my children, they have all that plus their Samoan.
And have you been to Samo?
I have been to Samo. I actually went there when I was 21, so not too long ago. Years ago, yeah.
So which team do you support when they play Rockbee Island or the Old Blacks?
The Old Blacks.
Ya na'to fa'fongama'fo'i ole itato ma'lo fa'anga ngia. I'elo na so'tanga nee ma'ngati toa. Ne'pe'ole afo'i va'anga na o'olo o'tanga tifinoa nee ma'auri ne'iporua. Ya olona to'a o'ailani sa'ule olona tamaa, olitamaa olona to'a. Ya ma'ua sa'ifita'ausanga no'fo'ina. Ya a'ole afo'ilana si'ali pe'ona bo'oo Samoa. Wa'ale olona a'inga i'pe'ona muu mai'tanauanga ma'faltua olfai'au. Ya ole ma'la'inga lo'ale o Kathleen. Ya a'ole afo'ilava pe' Kathleen il'alu su'tasi onta'ausanga no'oe Samoa. Ol'fa'fo'anga le tu'anga na e ma'lamalama'fo'ilai tu'anga. Ya va'ausanga olona a'inga e fa'yungu'fi'a fo'ina e ma'lamalama'itato tu'anga fat Samoa. Kathleen, so what made you decide to run for the mayor? You know, I look at the social media and how they abuse people, attack people. And I thought, there's some parts of the country where they didn't have a full number of people volunteering to run for councillors. And I thought, it's not an easy job to go. So what made you decide to run for this?
That's a really good question. I have been on council for the last three years. I am really concerned about the direction that our city is heading. In particular around affordability. I speak to quite a lot of people, especially throughout this campaign, but obviously throughout these last three years. There's a lot of elderly, we have a program called Matu Apau and I was speaking to them actually last week or a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, they've worked really hard and they've paid off their home. And now they're struggling with the rate increases. And being able to afford the cost of living in our country and in our city. So, I'm concerned about people actually leaving our city because they can't afford to stay here. Young people too. And as I said, you know, I'm from Ngati Toa. We will be here, we're not planning on leaving. And I wanna make sure that my kids, that they can afford to stay here too. And their kids, I want the generations to continue to live here, not just live here, but actually thrive. Not just get by.
Right. So, ole va'anga le talanoa ne'ipore, polanuwa le nemafafa'ua e adu'ole il'fo'ili tawanga ne'ole tamo'oe le ol'etofi fa'yule, o'yule nuu ne'iporua. Ya le pe'ona ifa'anga. O i'ya nafana unei porua o Ngati Toa olona, le fo'ili le tana ma'auri, le unepito ma'auri. Ya ma'le senia la'alu i'fo'isi senia o'tanu no'fo'ina itanu fa'ifanga le tu'anga o porua. Mo'tanga'olo i'elaimi nee ile manao i'tanu tala'so'i fuanga nee. Ya mo'ala'una nafana o'fo'ita'ua onu le'ale awamona ato'oto'o porua. Ya atonu le i'elo ne'ya nganga muli lotu'ua le safana'uni i'otanga tamu'ni a'porua. Ya ma'atula'anga na i'ayi, so'sanga'ayi lo'limi no'fo'ima ma'ola mai'ya. Ya le la'una'una ue tamo'oe lta'wanga nee. Ole, I ask you the question about the abuse thing, because it's important. How would you deal with that if you ever, or even now, you probably get some attack from certain cultures?
Yes, social media is an interesting tool, beast. I found it to, I think you need to have boundaries around it. When I first campaigned, I didn't actually use social media at all. And I didn't really use it much until sort of the halfway through my term. Because I realized that there's a lot of people that don't know what's going on in council. So, I wanted to be able to share in easy-to-understand ways. What's going on, decisions that are being made, how people can use their voice to influence. And social media is really good for being able to get your message far to lots of people who can't necessarily be in a council meeting, you know what I mean? So, it is useful. And it's just unfortunate that there is that other side of it where you get some criticism or there's nasty comments. And how do I deal with it? I have a supportive family. And I just have to be, you know, just, I either answer those comments or I don't if they're, you know, depends on what it is, but.
I don't have a Facebook page.
You don't have a Facebook page, don't you?
And yet I run the social media effort.
So I don't really either for my personal side. Because I'm mainly trying to get the message out through around council work and that. But I think it's important to use it as a tool, but to have some boundaries yourself around how you protect yourself.
Thank you. I asked a question specifically because now you're heading into some area where you're gonna be bombarded daily.
Probably, yeah.
And whether you're prepared for it. Ya pe'ole talanoa nee, ya olitula'anga o'takato. Viso'ta'inga fa'ifanga ne'yo'no'po'fa'anga le technology. Ole na'ali si va'anga le etele ina so'ona fa'ia itala'misauanga ma'la'fonganga tanga. Ya fa'ina i'ata'to a'ole a'ala'ufesi ya Kathleen. Ya po'usahuni, nuu po'una usahuni, fo'ala'fo'ala ne'ya silfiya i'ale u'ta'lo i'emoni. Ole si tu'anga na e ol'etele ina'afi atato. Ale fa'anga'anga o'ye i'elo na a'inga so'so'anima'anga'anga o'ya i'itu'anga fa'pea. Right, thank you. So let's start looking at some of your relevance experience and, you know, for doing this job. By the way, is there a job description for a mayor's job? Wrong? Has anybody asked if there is such a, what is the?
We do have a, like a guidebook, yes, yes. So for how to be, yeah, how to be a good councillor, how to be a good mayor, so there is.
And also do a performance review of the mayor and all the councillors.
Yes, that's currently not done. I think election time is when.
Yeah, put it down, make sure if you ever come. Make sure you do a performance review. It's all very well for candidates to come and get interviewed and then I try and get people to vote them in. And then we don't see any performers. So you never get to understand how many meetings they've missed. Or what they've pushed while they're there during the year. You only do it at the end of his term, when they have the opportunity to come. But I think during the term, they should be answerable to the community. They should say, this is what's happened this month or this quarter. So I think part of what you're saying, we're gonna discuss that, you know, having a quarterly follow-up with the community, which is a good idea.
It's a great point you brought up. And I was talking to Taima at Fangaloa, who organized, as you know, the meet the candidates in Mangavin. And she said to me, because it was such a great success, so many people turned up. Which shows that people are really interested in local government. Local government is really, I even think it's more important than central government. Because this is where you can actually use your voice to make a difference where you live. But I digress. What she was saying is, in May this year, oh sorry, next year, after everybody gets into council, she wants to have another meeting so all the current council can speak again to the community. And just what you said, how's things going? How are you going to do good for us here and, you know, performance review?
Because they talk about people not participating in the election. They're not bothering votes. And if people don't know what's happening, they may say, why do I need to bother if they're not telling me what's happening? So I think it's something for you to consider.
Definitely.
Yeah, whether you get it as a mayor or whether you do it as a councillor.
That's something I really want to push for, is to make council more accessible for people. Because it's really important, you don't know how your voice can influence if you don't know what's going on. Right? So, and then how do you know what's going on? You have to go look for it. So that's why I do want to implement some new things, some new ideas. Even having our meetings, they're currently streamed right now on YouTube. But not everybody's on YouTube, but a lot of people are on Facebook. Wonganoe Council, they currently stream their meetings live through Facebook. So they get a lot of engagement and people know more what's going on because it comes into their newsfeed.
Yeah, I think for the Poru'ua residents, we're very fortunate because I've been interviewing the mayors now for a long time.
Ah, yes.
About four different mayors since I started working, yeah. So Poru'ua is well informed, especially the Samoan community, because the mayor comes in every month. So if you're ever successful, then you'll probably come in and represent the council. And that's one thing I must give to Poru'ua, you know, they are actually informing the Samoan community on the internal monthly program. So that's good. And I think others are not getting the same sort of information. Ole va'anga le matanau le tu'anga il'anga ilu'ma'ana i'eva'ipe'ona i'eni'elo nafisui, vi'ema'usu'tawa. Ole fa'amatala i'ya il'ena'una'unga le il'ata'ulso'i fuanga ma'me t'una'fa'itoto'ongo porua lava lato. Ya ma'va'va'ai ime fa'yungu'fiya i'ona maua'tanga ta'ia so'ta'inga po'afanga. Elana i'eva'ipe'ole si va'anga na il'oe'ole'ole i'ona maua'tato. Ya tamfai le i'eva'anga'unga i'ya ina i'fa'fa'yungu'fiya i'ona a'ua'tanga ta'ime o'tanauanga fa'ipe'ile'ona i'eta'ua le i'ase tanauanga sitasi ososaniaya. I'ya i'eva'anga i'eta'ua onu i'ase fatasinga. Ina i'fa'iloa ma'ya tanga ta'osu'ye to'ngu'le puli nga nuu. Ya o'tanauanga po'fa'unga o'olo fa'ela'to. Olana i'fo'i fatano'na'uta'ina'uta'inga le'ya i'ena i'ya i'ase va'anga fa'pe'na. Elana'ufesi le pe' momoa, pe' i'ase job description, po' i'ase tusi ol'eli t'ama'oe o'anga'unga ya'ulpunu. Ya a'ela i'ya i'ya fo'ili tusi e fa'amatala i'responsibilities mo' onu i'ya t'una'fa'yle puli nuu. Ya ma'le si va'anga le i'le'oe i'ase fatula'anga ng'ao i'eme i'ta'o performance appraisal. Po'le fatano'anga o'tanga tfa'anga'unga po'le tanga'ala'ulpulu nuu posfai'ule. Ina i'ya ma'lamalama'itato i'yu palota i'tula'anga i'ya. Elana'fatala Kathleen, ole si va'anga na ole'eva'ia na'una'una ina i'ya fa'ise va'anga fa'pe'na. Efe'iloa i'ya inga o'tanga ta'ole puli nga nuu e fa'amatala i'tanga ta'palota ina i'ome'ole tu'anga le'ya i. Wa'atonu va'anga tonu'ana ol'etele na misi atato i'ya ma'le i'afe'ase o'ya palota. Olana i'ena'una'anga na e t'una'fa'anga le social media. E i'fa'iloa to'iphoneu tanga'ulpulu nga nuu ma'ni ma'fa'unga'fa'ia. Epe'ona fa'anga i'wanga'ui le sana i'eta'ua e i'fa'anga'ula tu'anga le'ya. Ya a'oe va'anga fa'pe'na i'ole fa'ala'anga'anga ina. Mo'tato le si'ufongala muu a'misipitato ne'iporua le u'ta'li ya Kathleen. Lucky o'to'nei porua ole a'mo'fi'ale puli nuu a'misipulanga nuu. Ya a'mai'tima sina t'asi fa'ile, le interview lunga ne'ina ma'lamalama'itanga. So I hope senia you'll be listening, I hope we catch all the things up. It's good. I'ase va'anga o'misite'ua o'fisusani ma'ya i'ya i'fisusani ma'ela i.
I'la'uma'ana i'ya fisi'ili i.
Alright, I think at this point, I'll come to senia because we wanna have a break here. And then your better half will come and join us. While senia, ma'ngoo o'tele i tu'uli, i'ase i'la va'anga t'fisau'noa i'ya i'ale i. Fa'isato ma'lo longu'upu'ule.
Fa'atai lauwa fionga afmasanga. Ela'unga nalotoma'ala lo'uma'le ma'le fa'atai le tu'anei ava'noa. Ma'ua'e ma'ua'ata i'ya ava'noa fa'pe'nei i'ya wa'avi'a fo'ia. Ya Kathleen ma'ala'ana kempe'ile sosanile il'ala'utalia il'fia a'ua i'ole puli nuu i'iporua. I'ya wa'fa'ia fo'ima ma'ava'noa o'te' mate'omai i'mase'utamo Kathleen. Le fa'atai la'va'ile tu'anei ava'noa. I'anga'ta'ili fa'atai lauwa fionga afmasanga u'a'i. An'ale si'ano fo'ia i'ta'ma'ali'fo'ima ma'le tala'fa'itsoa i'ya i'lemfa'ya Kathleen. O'na na'ma'va'la ava'noa fa'a'ro'ua wa'ya il'asoli nee. Ya fa'atai atu'la'va'ile i'ya Samoama ue'ofa'anga'unga mai'to'pa'ia ma'malu'tonu t'ula'ama ma'ota. Mai'ase fo'ia i'na i'otato tanga'ta'ima'lamalanga'ana. Ya ve'anei taimi ne'ava'to i'fo'isa'ua. Le ase'upu'ua sala'ile nganga'ana. Ya ma'lo'ava ifale i'ya e potu'la'va'ltautai a'sela na'tu. Ya a'ote'ele i'tua i'sela ma'le potu nee. Ya nanafa'iloa atua atonu le t'ama'te'me'atua t'ele po'ao'la'una tanga. Ya fa'pe'ia i'olo'ui ng'o'ose i'ya filo. Ole o'te'fa'ipoi po'atu i'se'utuo'luu o sinapati le'ana'ha filo. Ole le'ana'ha i'ya le tua'ao o'ole fa'ise'au. I'ya o sinapati i'ya olona alalafanga mai'sa'anapu. I'ya a'ua'ao i'ya ona'yo'nu'ubele a'ofale'ula na'ofa'ana u'a'i. I'ya omali'ea o'olo'tupu'anga ma'la'uma'le t'ele o'tausanga omali'ea na na'ui'ayi ma'tausia'ya a'ua i'se'ua'anga le i'ase ulitau'la'fo' i'mali'ea. I'ya o'se'utamaa ole sale'lo'anga ole'oma'nu va'ha' silva'ay. I'ya o'ma'nu'una i'ya nama'ala'anga mai'iniu'sila ina i'uma'isa'ua i'samoa mai'welen'toni. I'ya il'atasiva fitu lima. Il'ase fa'ana'ula taimi ina i'ya oma'ilo ina i'ya tia'ilma'aa ina ma'ua'tama'to'fitu. Ya ole unmatua'ala le e fa'ipoi po'i ma' Kathleen tama'le o'filo. I'ya ona tasiva'iva lima le vala'ua'lia ma'ua'anga'unga le'ya tua. Il'asi'matu kalesia le le e fa'isa i'ya ole kalesia. Fa'potu'anga Yesu i'samoa i'ya ma'tu nuu mama'ua. I'ya ma'ya'ile ma'tutupu'anga o'a'ua i'ya ma'tua'ilotu katoliko'a ma'uyo. I'ya a'ua o'se'utuo'luu i'ya ole e fa'kasa ma'uyo'io'sionatu'a'a ole ana'ha filo. I'ya a'ua'ua'fsosani le ama tinaya'fsuya'ei. Sa'ua'fsosanila u'a'ya almanoto. Wa'natu'ua sa'anapu'a'e malanga'lo'e sa'iri manu'ia'ua'ala fa'ana'utu'se'fu. I'ya ona fa'ma'utu'luu le ama lolotu'ya almanoto. I'ya olona'to'fila sa'anga'ue i'ole a'ua'fsosani ama'ala'anga na i'ano'me'netama. Sopu'anga ma'fatu'ua ya lilifa'ma'lo'lu i'ya a'pe'ia'fsutu'ina i'ya filo ma'fsuya. Ola'ua'ala'va'ya sa'ana'fa'anga'ala'anga'unga'ala'anga i'ya almanoto. Epe'ose'ose tala'anga'na ma'ua'ya t'ausanga umala'ama'te'mala'anga iphone tanga'ali kalesia. Pe'itai'ala ne'ita'ausanga. I'ya nama'ala'anga tua'iloo ma'fa'a'una ilo'ole tofi taitai'mitanga'unga. Ole tofi tuya'ina taitai'mitanga'unga welentoni. Taimi ne'ila'olo o va'aa i'ya tue elfa'ise'au i'ya ma'au kilani. I'ya ole ma'vala'ua'una ina i'ya a'ole ma'ua'tua'ala'ala'ulfa'ana. I'ya pe'fo'ila'una tu'la'ima i' Kathleen t'ama'fa'ima ole ava'noa le'ya. Ole ma'fsosani ya mal'ttalo malma a'fsosani ma'ta'ua tu'ya Kathleen. Wa'lo'fo'ia i'ya i'ya i'ole ma'lo ma'lfaya'ina a'ona ma'fsosanila i'mtala'noa i'ya Kathleen. Pe'tu'la'ima i'ama'lo vi'ia le'ya tua a'fa'ya'ina i'mtua'isanga vi'ia le'ya tua. E a'one i'mnu'ua'ilona'lotu pe'la'unga so'una'fa'ano'onoa. A'ua'e i'ya i'ala ma'lo i'lfaya'ina i'taimi ina i'pe' a'oo'ona t'unu'ulitavisi ni'onga. Ale t'aua i'ya ma'ua i'ya tali'ama'ia i'luu a'ama'lo vi'ia le'ya tua. I'ya nanfa'amanu'anga a'ale fa'amanu'ia ina fo'ia. I'ma'tua'isanga vi'ia i'la'una'fo'li'ya tua. I'fa'atai omaua'lo na ma'lo sima'lo na'ava'noa. E ha'luu i'ye i'fo'ili le t'ama'fa'ipe' na t'aisia le miti le'ya e famue'emo'ia. Ya a'le'ya senia e ma'fa'ipe' a'le a'la'ua'ama'le ma'ta'inga a'la'anga o'leli.
Ma'lo fo'ia i'lo'fo'ita'ma'ali le i'ngola'ola'ope'ose'ua'ana ue ina fo'iva'ita'osu'fuanga ma'la'ausanga ue i'la'to. Ya a'la'fa'ise'ato ma'lo longu i'ya ona fa'va'ala'le interview ai'ma'ni'vi'tele a'ya o'fo'ima'le tama'ala'inga. Lofatu'ia i'pe' a'filoa ilumla.
Sa'ila'ava lauwa fionga afmasanga wale'ava noa, sa'ila'ava mani'eli aso.
O'to'ei fatalo fato'ulfa'fanga'anga le tino'uni tu'asu'olo ma'tofata si'nilpofasa. Opento muu mai'ili'ata mo'uto'olo o mai'mo mai'lo ng'ol Facebook, ma'le YouTube. Ya ole vatas i'ma'ili'ali'i ole'tamaita'ine i'ya Kathleen ma'nei fo'isi si'ala mai. Momoa ol'etina'ole'tamaita'ine'elo namada'inga lo'. Ya ole vatas i'ma'ili sunga i'ya stu. I'ye ma'nei fo'la'unga'unga mai'ma si'ala mai'ili'ali'i. O Kathleen e pe'ona i'mu'ole'ue t'ono'ulpofasa lau. Fatalo fato'ula sunga ni ta'ao. Ma'lo la'va'so'fo'ama'ami seni'ala'ua i'tu' e tefita'a.
Fa'atai lava'ala'ua fionga wale'ava noa. And I want to say hi to fatalo fato'i mato listeners there i at home, all our elders in that listening to our to our conversation today. Thank you for having us afmasanga. I was, if you watched the other segment, I was born here in Newtown. 1976, I'm the eldest of seven boys. We all went to Melkook School and Wellington College. So we all lived in Arlington, at the top of Cuba there. For myself, I was honored enough to join the military. So I was in the New Zealand Army for about seven years. And I have another two brothers, so three of us joined the New Zealand Army. So we all did operations overseas for the country. And my two brothers are now out of the service like myself. But I'm still doing work for the community. I am a firefighter in Wellington. So every now and then I work in Puridua, but I'm actually based in Thornton Fire Station. So we're quite busy. And when I first come in, there was only a few Samoans. And now there's quite a few Samoans coming through in Wellington. And we got a little Afi group for all the Pacifica.
Did you ever come across a guy, Sid Jettman?
His son. So I think his son told me his dad was at Thornton as well. And he left around, I think, the mid-'90s.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I've had a good catch-up of his son here in Puridua every now and then. When we watch the radio.
Wonder why you look fit? Because firefighters, you know, people in firefighters' solo service, they have to be fit. Anyway, la'fa'atai, fa'atai atolu'ulfa'fanga le tino'ia ole'ua fatalo fatfo'ili sunga i'ya stu filo'la'to'ltaya'uni i'ya na'uma'uma'ini'si'ulva'anga'fa'pe'tani'ya. Sa'unga i'Wellington College. O i'ya safana'ua in Newtown. Il'atasiva fitu'unu i'ya ma'lo'anga a'inga le o Kathleen. Ya ole itamfai tava'ama'ltu'fo'ile. Ya pe'ona ma'uma'fo'ole sa'fa'inga'sa'itono'ami ito'fitu i'la'to itama'uma'ulfa'ana'unga le'ya. I'to'mo'isi'no'usona i'fo'itono'ole va'anga a'ua'iniu'sila. Ya ma'nei taimi ne'ia i'ole t'faya'anga'unga'unga'fisusani community. Ya ma'itono'le firefighters i'ya po'ole va'anga'la'afimu'ule fo'itini'umu'le i. Ya ngalwenga'alu'alu'alu'alu'la'fo'anga ya, ya pe'ona fa'tu'ali ti'au'ape'ifoi'anga male'ole fitu'ala'anga. Ngalwenga'ali ta'ou na kolini e, ite'utupu ma'se'emu'ua'ale'ou. Ma'alu si ma'ala'ala'ma'ala'ala'fa'anga ngalwenga. Fa'afte'ilava'ala, nice to introduce yourself, so now people know who's Kathleen, bis, bis. Okay, Kathleen, let's come back to you on the second part now, we just wanna wrap these things up.
He wasn't expecting to come in, by the way, so. I'm going to make that up to him.
No, no, it's cool. Once they come in here, we invite them, because this is Samoan funny. Everybody's welcome to come and have a chat. So, so let's look at your key things, you know, that you wanna, ah, pursue. Like policies or the thing that you, you wanna do for the community.
Yeah, it, it's interesting, um, there was actually a policy that just actually came up, um. Quite recently, um, that I would like to, to look at. So, um, one of the things with the cost of living is a lot of families are starting to live, um. Together more, you know, and co-inhabit their, um, their homes, whether that be having a, um. A granny flat, um, so their, um, parents can live, ah, with them, or, or whether it's, um, having their. Their kids that are just starting out, you know, um, so they're all sort of in the, in the one. Ah, on, on the same property, but you know, different, different growing, so, um, just recently. Ah, in the last rates, ah, when the blast rates were due. I, I found out that sixty families had received this fifty percent rates increase. And so I got a lot of, um, distressed people getting in touch with me, um, asking, you know. Why has my rates gone up so much? Because it was such a huge jump, like fifty percent. The rates increase was only meant to be six, but they're telling me, you know, it's fifty percent or forty-five percent. And the reason is, is that, ah, council start, ah, they looked at QV, who, ah. Do the valuations for the homes, and looked at the data, and saw that, um, these homes had. A second dwelling on them, so that might be a granny flat, um, outside in the backyard. That might be within the home, you could close off the door, and it's a self-contained apartment or the downstairs, so. What happened was council looked at QV and said, oh, um, there's, there's sixty families here who. Um, need to get charged another set of rates. And, and that's what they just, they just got billed straight away. Um, but there, I, I think, we, I believe we need to look at this a bit deeper, because, um. I just, I got an email just the other day from this, this man who, um, his, his kids are in the back. The back of the section in a, in a place, and they got, they, they built this because it was. Not affordable yet for them to move out, you know, and they're trying to keep their family unit together. So I think we need to look really closely at, um, this, this charge. Because, um, I know in Auckland, ah, or, I believe it is in Auckland. If it's a family living, if it's a household, then they don't get charged too lots of rates.
I, I think it's a very good point you raise, I think it applies across the country. So, it's gotta be a policy to cover or govern all these things, ah. Because they should actually bill for the size of the land.
The value, yeah, not.
Not the number of houses on this piece of land, because it may not be very good if you squeeze them all in this piece of land.
Well, that's the thing, it's, I mean, you could have the overcrowding in a, in a home. Ah, and they wouldn't get charged any rates, but the moment you create a little bit extra dwelling, now they're getting penalized.
But then on the other side, then you look at the services, ah, you'll be running a lot of water. All that sort of stuff, you know, the sewage and all that, so, you know, they'd be looking at the cost of providing the service.
You're right, we've got to look at the whole picture.
But it's good that you know, wanting to do that, and then I, I guess. I get it'll be a conversation between you, QV, and government, central government.
Or the whole council as well.
And the council, so you have a good understanding. But I've, I've had, ah, interviews with Anita, and you're former mayor's in Porirua. And unfortunately, the way I see it, Porirua hasn't got that many assets. That derives revenue for you to pay for all the costs of running the city. And that's why things are a bit expensive here in Porirua, not like Wellington, Auckland, they've got. Airports and things where they get more money out of, to subsidize the race paid fire by the rate payers. So good luck, it's not an easy thing, you know, you're gonna have yourself a challenge. But, ah, I guess, um, I've always thought, plus you should actually involve the community more. And if I was the mayor, I would say to the community, come up some solutions. This is the problem, tell us what we should do. Then, they, they can't ask you once they've given you the solution.
But that's the whole point about having people's voice shape the city, you're right. And, and we don't have, ah, a lot of assets, ah, and I, I. I believe, and I've spoken to, it's funny, I was door knocking just yesterday. And I door knocked on, ah, I didn't know who he was at the time, but he ended up being a council staff. And, um, and he said to me, you know, you're, you're right, we need to look. At the actual spending within council as well, that there's room there for, um, for us to. To save more, to spend smarter, and just to deliver things in a more innovative way. And that, that's, you know, so it's, it's not just always the up the rates, but we've got to look a bit wider.
Right, thank you for that. O va'anga i'ma t'atano'ia, o fa'ango. I, is it ono Porirua male, male ta'mo'fa'anga, e fa'fa'ango fi'ali ta'ou, o a'fo'i'os'if'anga ini. Ta'ipe'la'au, va'anga fa'ta'itaila'ama'ia Kathleen. Ya a'ing'ali'ala'atu'fanoa, ale'ou fa'popo'fale fa'ia'tunu'pe'nu'fo'isi matu'au, po'sanga t'matu'au, po'la'fa'ana'fu. Ite'au'au sa'utu'ali'ali rates, ale'ala'ama'na'tu'ia itau'ana iye se tano'anga fa'ama'ama'ama se. T'atununga po'se'va'anga i'fa'iel'va'anga'ali, ya a'une'ita'ou'ama'ama'ama'anga. Pe'ama'ia rates, pe'ute'au'au'ulu'anga fast food percent le, le'tula'anga'ali'ia. Ya ma'ine'fo'i Porirua pe'ona t'ala'noa'ia, ile tau'os'if'anga. Le vo'ala'ana t'ala'noa'ia, eh, eh, o Porirua le pe'ou, weli'tona'ama'ki'ani, etele'ana'aseta'ama'ama'itupi, e fa'tu'pe'anga'anga. Ya o ina'ipe'ia fa'anga la'ng'anga'ali to'ateli o, ol'anga t'ala'ano'fu Porirua le, mo'ua'fo'i'fa'ango la'fanga'ia rates. Ya o'tula'anga'ana'ia, ya ale'lo'fa'ia'tu'ma'ali ya tele'va'anga'ali itau'ufai'ia. Ila'anga'anga pe'ate'au'pa'ama'ia, eh, eh, fa'ta'ala'noa, ele ngata'itono'ul'ka'ol'pule nganu. Ah, ole QV fa'pena male'ama'alu, ina iye se'outasi, se'fa'mo'emo'ia, e fa'fa'ango fi'ali tau'alu'ala'anga'ailuma. I think we'll come to a couple more things before we wrap up.
Yeah, a good memory.
Yeah. It was everything.
Yeah.
Local first procurement, ah, I love local. I, there's one thing I like about this, and being promoted by other councils throughout the country. Ah, usually give the first opt, ah, option to your tradespeople and, you know, contractors. And I see that's one of the things that you're trying to promote.
Yeah, so, ah, a little, oh, maybe two years ago, ah, I went to a event at Partaka. And, um, the Iwi was actually leading it, Ngatitou, and they were talking about the circular economy. And, um, I'm, they've been implementing this for a while now. Um, and, and so have another organization in Porirua where it's, ah, the. The whole idea is to keep the money in our city, you know, where. We talk about trying to support local business, we've kind of got to put our money where our mouth is, council spends a lot of money. And, ah, it's great having support services, but actually if they're, if they're providing a service that. Council can contract, or council does contract, then that's gonna really help. Um, so, keeping the money in our city rather than giving contracts to, ah. Even international companies. I, I know there was a Onpross Street, do you remember when the, the pipes were being done? That went on for a really long time, and that was, I believe it was an Australian company. Whereas we had, ah, Wellington Pipelines who, more regional. And, and they were done so fast, and they, they knew the community as well. They engaged, ah, with the, the neighborhood, ah.
Who paid, who paid for that job? Was it the council?
The rate payers. Ah, council. Yeah, yeah, council, I mean, it would have been Wellington Water.
Because you also run annually, ah, you, ah, keep, keep local, you know, you're, there's a, something that you run here.
Love local.
Yeah, love local.
Yeah, so those are events, ah, which are, which are great to showcase what they have. I, I think with, um, within council, we, we do have a lot of services that we contract out. Ah, and I've heard some people say, oh, well, ah, how's that gonna work? Is that gonna cost us more money? Um, it's actually valuable money should, would always be first, so, so long as, um. They are, you know, charging the, the right price, rate payers are getting valuable money, if they're local, then that's a win-win as well.
Okay, thank you. Ya ole'fo'tatano'isi va'anga'ia le, momo'ong'anga'anga'fa'ia, atatong'al'pule nganu. E tau'ona fa'omomoa tanga t'anga'alu'ua, e ma'ana'ofu'atono Porirua. E ave'ila te'fa'anga'anga. Iro'ale ave'ong'anga'anga'fa'ia komkal'ati mai fa'fo'pe'la'fa'ta'itai'ing'ali ina'ita'ou. Ele company Australia no'ama'ia fa'imo'ome'au, o, o'afoi'ua la'apai'po'i, ah, va'ia ine'i. Ya ta'ou'na, ya i'company ine'i Porirua in'fa'ira'ona'ama. Ya ma, atonu'fa'mo'emo'ia fo'inalo, ya i'poru'ole fa'ala'ato'la'loko. E ta'mo'fa'ia'ina'ia tu'ula'ava'noa i'company t'oni'ali, ya moma'anga'anga'fa'iti fa'pena. I'll pick up on a couple more things here and then we'll wrap up, ah, your quarterly evening week from.
Ah, yes.
What's that?
Yeah, well, so on, currently on, on council, I've heard a few people say, oh, I, I can't get to. Council because it's eight thirty in the morning, you know, they, they want to put through, ah, their. They, they wanna be there to say their hearing or their submission, they have to take work off, in order to come and speak. So, um, it used to be that council meetings were in the evenings anyways, years ago. My mother used to be on council, she was the deputy mayor. And, um, back then, they, um, they had council meetings in the evening all the time. Um, I'm not suggesting that, but at least every quarter, so that people who. Can't come to council during the day can come, and have their say, that's really what that's all about.
I, I guess once you're a mayor, you can dictate. You can say, we're gonna have these meetings.
Dictator.
Donald, Donald Trump does it all the time. Okay, the C is KPIs, that's interesting, so, ah, what's, what's that about?
So, um, that, that's the key performance measurements of the, the CE. Ah, what I would like to see is the councillors, ah, to have more of an input, to workshop. What those key performance measurements are, and that they, ah, align with, ah. With what we, with what the city wants to be delivered, ah, at a, at a high level, so not in, um, uh, detail. Because you still have to, she's still the, ah, employee, so you still have to have that.
Yeah, the operational side.
Yes, but to make it, um, there are some councils that publish them in the annual report. So that everybody, ah, the public can see what has been delivered. It's really just about transparency and, and accountability.
Yeah, it's just going back to what I said about performance, ah, process of council members, which. Ah, this is the only time we get to see a lot of them, when they campaigned to be volunteering, after that it don't seem many.
You should go on my, my Facebook page all the time.
Ole, le'isi va'anga'ua'ule'ali t'ala'noa'ia, ya ole'tula'anga'ali, ole'fa'anga'ali, ole'afatula'anga'ali'ali. Le fa'ta no'anga'anga'anga'fa'ia, ale'anga t'ali'pule'ali, le'pule nganu, le'ta'ou'ole, ole chief executive officer. Ina'ia malama'ama'ama'ye se sa'au, ah, ole'fa'ipule. Ile tu'fa'tasi ni'va'anga'ali, ina'ia, ng'ala'anga t'tau'pe'ou'ama'tasi. Ma'anga'anga'fa'ia, o lo'fa'anga'la'anga o i'ale puli nganu. Ya mo'fa'ipule, ile t'ono'ul'pule nganu fa'ti'anga. Ya ma'ali etele'va'anga'fo'ia le t'atano'ali Kathleen ita'au'ole'emo'li, and a'ye fa'mo'emo'ia. Final message that you wanna think to the voters, ah, our listeners here this morning, Kathleen?
Ah, okay, final, final message?
Your final pitch.
It's, it's interesting because I'm not really like a. A, a pitcher, like a. Um, look, I, I, I care deeply about our city and, um. As I, as I mentioned, I, I have been concerned about the direction it's been heading. Um, that's why I'm, I'm standing, I wanna make our, ah, our city affordable for the people who live here. Ah, and for the generations to come. Ah, I want our city to not just be surviving and getting by, but, but actually thriving and, um. And for your voice to, to, to count, you know, so you know what's going on in your city. And your voice is shaping what's happening, so, um, if, if you feel, ah, if you feel like you're happy with the way things are. Then probably don't vote for me because, um, ah. But if you want change, if you feel like, ah, our city needs change, then, um, I would humbly ask that you put a one. Um, next to my name, for mayor.
And your name is?
My name is Kathleen Filo.
Ya ona'atofa'fo'ama pe'fa'tatano'va'anga'ua'ule'ali t'as'ali'ali, ole'atono'ala'ama'ama'na'tu'ia i'ne'ia, ma'afofa'pe'ama'ana'ati'ali tanga t'palota. Ya le'one'fa'anga'fa'imo'oa'ali e'fo'ali'folobility. Ne tau'os'if'anga'ali ine'i Porirua ina'ia, ng'afatia'ali itanga t'ono'ul'pule nganu Porirua. E si va'anga'ale'ali'ana'ama'na'tu'ia i'ta'ou'ita'mo'oe mol'tofu'ali'aa. Ile o, t'ali'ia i'ale direction, po'la'va'anga'ali'aa'anga'ia'ali puli nganga'ole puli nganu Porirua. O isi va'anga'ana'ole'ama'na'tu'ia i'ta'ou'ana'ia swinga. Ah, ole voice, eh, eh, e'fe'ia'ona, ah, tanga t'ala'atene'ali Porirua, e tau'ana. Tau'ia'alu, lo, lo, lo'li'au. Ala'ati'mi'ama'ana'tu'ia i'fa'ali'ala'tau, ya n'fa'ali'ala'anga'anga'ao tau. Ya ma'afa'ape'ao'ena'ona'ua ina'ia, fa'ala'ual'palota mosi swinga. O i'el'anga t'ita'ou'ana'ala'palota'ia, a'afa'ape'ali'ali'ama'ana'tu'as'ua o'ifie'ali'ama'ana'ia. Ya lo'na'uing'ali'isi mete'ala'palota'ia fue'ia'ia, ya le'ofa'ali'aa'afa'ape'ali'ana'ana'uiswinga. Ya ona'palota'ali'ama'ua'ia. So I think I've conveyed that what you just said, because it's very important, you'll find, you know, trace our listeners, ah, in Porirua here. And for us here in Samo'Ke'aturi, like we say to all the politicians we interview, all the best, good luck.
Ah, fa'afte'i, ah, mul'ia avanoa.
Yeah, mul'ali'ali ya na'ou'fa'afte'i ma'ia Kathleen mol'tatu'ama, le'ama'alu'alu mol'tatu'Samo'Ke'aturi'ali t'au'ali. Ya la'atu'atali'ul'fo'ia t'asi mol'fa'ou'ama'atu'fa'salo'ala'ama, al'taimi nei. Mate, a'ali'fa'to'fa'ia fa'ama'alu'alu'fo'iala'la'la'amo.
Thank you. Fa'afte'ilava.
T'atu'ateli'ua'ia t'ali'ape'aa.
Yeah.
Ya, a'la'atu'fo'ia, ya fa'to'fa'as'if'ua.